Good evening. Today is Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, and the board meeting is now called to order. It is 6:03 PM. At this time, Director Shandegary, will you now read the land acknowledgement?
Yes, Chair. We are gathered today on the land of the Kalapuea, who are represented by the confederated tribes of the Grand Round and the confederated tribes of the Salits Indians. The relationship between the Kalapuea people and this land continues unbroken to this day. And we offer gratitude for the land and for the generations present and past who have stewarded the land since time immemorial. We respectfully acknowledge and honor past, present, and future Native American and Indigenous students and staff of Salem Kaiser Public Schools. We invite you to join us in honoring these ancestral grounds and celebrating the resilience and strength of all Native American and Indigenous people. Thank you.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Superintendent Castaneda, are there any modifications to the agenda?
Yes, tonight, we do have one modification. We'll be requesting the removal of item 9B from the consent agenda as we are still waiting for the official confirmation from the election boards.
Thank you. I will turn this portion of the agenda over to Superintendent Castaneda, our spotlight on success.
Wonderful. This is an especially important night because it's Spotlight, it's graduation season, and so many other points of joy. And so, quick instructions for everyone who's participating in Spotlight. What we will do is call you up, and then at the end, we'll take photos against this backdrop, okay? So, I will kick us off first with our spotlight, and I'd like to introduce Jessica Solis-Flore, who is a CSOC from Robert's. Ah, wonderful, thank you. And she will be presuning our community spotlight. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, good evening, Chair Richardson, Board Directors, Superintendent Castaneda, and student advisors. It is my honor to talk about an organization that has made an incredible impact on our students and community, Punks with Purpose. Punks with Purpose is an essential resource for many of our students, especially those who have felt marginalized or disconnected. The team is remarkable in their ability to build genuine, healthy relationships with students, offering support no matter their background or circumstances. Punks with Purpose... Punks with Purpose helped launch a new club this year at South Salem High School, Saxons with a Purpose. This club has been a beacon of service with students finding ways to give back to our community all year long. One of the club's most significant accomplishments was organizing a first-ever summer resource fair, which connected over 300 students with valuable resources and opportunities for the summer. Many of the students involved in the Saxons with a Purpose Club this year previously struggled to connect with peers and staff, often feeling excluded by the system. Over time, these students have become some of the most service-driven members of our community, demonstrating the power of belonging. The services provided by Punks with Purpose extend far beyond just creating opportunities for students to serve. Their work includes providing safe spaces, such as their drop-in center, Stormy's Place, where youth can receive support or simply have a place to relax. They offer a wide range of services, including holiday assistance, food, clothing, hygiene products, case management, help with securing IDs, and laundry services. They even distribute totes filled with essential items, giving students access to what they need quickly and discreetly. Punks with Purpose also hosts a free annual event called Punks in the Park, which provides a wealth of resources to youth in our community. On behalf of our school community, I want to extend our deepest gratitude to Punks with Purpose for their ongoing commitment to our students. Their partnership has had a lasting and positive impact on many families, and we are excited to create even more opportunities for our youth.
Thank you. And for anyone who has not made it to Punks in the Park, it's actually a completely amazing community event, and it's coming up again very soon, so two thumbs up. I would now like to introduce Danielle Nevz, who will... our deputy superintendent, who will present our staff spotlight.
Good evening, Chair Richardson, Board Directors, Superintendent Castaneda, and student advisors. Tonight, we have the distinct honor of recognizing an extraordinary individual who has profoundly impacted the North Salem High School community, Jessica Miller. Jessica is a dedicated PE teacher at North, and she has gone above and beyond her role by becoming the driving force behind the Unified Program at the school. She's taken on the crucial responsibility of leading Unified initiatives both within the school and on the athletic fields and courts. Her commitment recently earned her the prestigious Oregon Unified Coach of the Year Award from the Oregon Athletic Directors Association. Under her exceptional guidance, the North Salem Unified Track Program achieved remarkable success, securing individual state titles in shot put and the 4x100 relay. This relay victory was particularly impressive as they not only repeated last year's title, but also shattered their own record by over three seconds. Beyond the track, the Viking Unified Basketball Program also celebrated a significant win this season, securing a victory in the Sprague Ole Cup Basketball Tournament. Jessica has been instrumental in the growth of Unified at North Salem since its inception. She actively recruits both athletes and partners into the programs, skillfully bringing together diverse staff and students in the spirit of inclusion. Athletic Director Brody Cavell said that Jessica has a remarkable ability to connect with students from all walks of life, helping them come together and thrive within the inclusive environment she has fostered. It's through her dedication to the Unified Program that students have been able to build meaningful relationships that might not have otherwise developed. Jessica's tireless work truly deserves this recognition. When you speak with her about Unified, you immediately sense that her greatest reward comes from seeing the smiles on students' faces and witnessing the pure joy they experience from being part of something larger than themselves. Her unwavering commitment has not only enhanced North Salem, but it's also significantly contributed to fostering a stronger sense of inclusion and belonging within the entire community. Congratulations, Jessica. Thanks for all you do.
I'm gonna tell such a short story. Well, it's a long story, but I'm gonna tell it in a short way. Last year was, in many ways, a difficult year in Salem Kaiser, and right around May 17th was really kind of the hardest point, which is when we were facing a number of staff reductions and changes. And on about May 19th, I was driving home from a day of work, and it was... I was feeling upset, like just really heartbroken by how hard things were. And I was at a stoplight, and there was a Salem Kaiser bus next to me, a little minibus. And I noticed lots of activity, and I looked over, and it was the Unified Team on the way back from their state track meet. And there was so much joy pouring out of this bus. And, um... I ran into Jessica at North the other day, and she was like, "I've always meant to ask you, what happened?" And the answer to what happened is, I cried all the way home. Because even while things are hard, there are so many people doing beautiful things. And this bus was just the symbol of all of that greatness in one overflowing bundle of joy. So, I just wanna really reiterate how incredible you are, but also how incredible Unified is as a gift to our community and to our school district. Okay, and so to close out our spotlights, I would like to welcome Jolynn Espinosa from Robert's, who will present our student spotlights. Also, Robert's has had a solid showing in spotlights. You guys are on a streak here.
Good evening, Chair Richardson, Board Directors, Superintendent Castaneda, and student advisors. It is with immense pride and excitement that we stand before you today to spotlight a truly outstanding group of students, Team MAPPO, our state champions of the annual Mesa Engineering Challenge.
I know a move. I'm Jonas Hudnall. I'm the Education Coordinator at Oregon Mesa, so I oversee all the... I oversee all the engineering challenges and everything for the state. So you might be asking, what is Mesa? Mesa stands for Mathematics, Engineering, Science, and Achievement. This incredible organization began at UC Berkeley with the goal of advancing equity in the STEM fields for Black and Brown communities. Mesa's mission is to provide students traditionally underrepresented in STEM fields, including Indigenous Americans, Alaska Native, African-American/Black, Hispanic, Latinx, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander, Girls Non-Binary Students, and students from low-income backgrounds with the skills, knowledge, and opportunities to develop their talents, explore technology-based careers, enter college, and complete... Oops, and compete successfully in the workforce. This year, the state Mesa Day competition focused on environmental sustainability, and Team MAPPO rose to the challenge. They connected with a real-world client who was struggling with making AI technology environmentally sustainable and engineered a brilliant solution. Their prototype, Tofu Cool, is designed to take in wastewater from AI facilities and use a solar-powered water temperature regulation system to prevent thermal pollution.
Team MAPPO has demonstrated not only technical brilliance, but also innovation, resilience, and the kind of teamwork that sets the foundation for future leaders in engineering. This year brought challenges for them as they all juggled extremely busy senior schedules, balancing high school classes, college courses, and life. Through long nights, trial and error, and countless brainstorming sessions, they've engineered a solution that pushed boundaries and impressed judges at every level. Their dedication has earned them a well-deserved victory at the state level, and now, they're heading to the national competition later this month in San Diego. What truly stands out about this team is their unwavering determination. This year, this team was absolutely determined to win first place, and their time, effort, and tenacity have undeniably paid off. These seniors, who just graduated on Friday, have left an inspiring legacy of persistence and excellence. We couldn't be prouder of the way these students have risen to the challenge and the example you've set for others. We're all behind you, cheering you on every step of the way. Let's go Nationals!
Okay, so we will meet over here for everyone who was a Spotlight honoree for some quick photos. All right, we have one additional round of spotlights that falls neither into community, student, or staff, which is to thank, honor, and celebrate two... Look at, you're already slumping. Two board members who have dedicated, I think it is possibly true to say, thousands of hours over the past years to Salem Kaiser leadership, to the school district, to countless events and activities. So, we are going to take time to honor you two. It will be awkward, because everybody's gonna stand here, one by one, and say wonderful things about you, and it will be so well-deserved. I will kick it off just to say that I just could not be more grateful and proud to have had a chance to work for both of these women, each of whom, in their own way, has been an incredible gift and a teacher to me, and certainly an amazing steward of a vision of a district that is constantly yearning to be its next best self for everyone. And so, we have a couple of things that we're gonna do tonight. The first is to give you guys gifts from the combination of the board and the executive team. These are gifts which you can open at home, but they were chosen specifically for you. It's art from the McKay Student Art Show. And we went through the entire room, like, three times, looking for the ones that we thought best conjured the spirit of you and your service into the room. So, we will send you home with those gifts, and with that, I will also open it up for anyone else who wishes on either the executive team or the board to offer their gratitude.
Well, I have a hard time sort of picturing being on the board without the two of you. And I have to say, I've been just in awe of how you both carry and conduct yourselves, and the passion that you bring, each of you, shows up differently in different ways. And it's always, I find, just what is needed in the moment. And I have really looked up, and I've learned so much from both of you. And as still the new kid on the block, I hope that I can, you know, continue to call on you all just to say, provide some of that guidance. But your passion for students and for ensuring that our district is better for students, for staff, and for our community is palpable. So, thank you.
Maria and Ashley, thank you. This is one time, if you will allow me, to call you Maria and Ashley. Normally, I always say, "Wise Chair," and "Chair," and is it okay? All right. I really enjoyed working with you. You know, we had, of course, in a lot of ways, we had diametrically opposite styles of approaching the issue. But I think it is only in that tension we have some of the best product that comes out. And I really think, if we didn't have tension of different perspectives, you can't have good policy. That's how I inherently believe. And you both are amazing. You know, I wish you continue and start pivoting towards, you know, how do we gonna get... continue this? Because this is a wonderful experience. We went through difficult times, and no, don't get me wrong. You know, I made it a point with Superintendent Perry that we welcomed you with flowers in the door, Sway. I don't know if I have the photograph to prove. And it is just, you know, times were such, but it was an important journey. Important for me to understand myself. It allowed me to kind of reflect. But it is also important for us to kind of continue to advocate. One of the important policy which really got, you know... Maria, I really appreciate, along with Karina, the three of us put our name as sponsors for the dual-language immersion, too, for example. It took like seven months of tough negotiations and battle and going all the way to state level and newspaper. And so, I really appreciate you standing alongside and supporting that, because it is really an important game changer. These are the kind of things that comes out when there is tension inside the board and different perspective, different ways. We were not hesitant. We were courageous enough to speak what we think is important for all our children and students and what is just... And to experience that, I really want to thank you both, because that allowed me to articulate along, you know, different perspective, yet focused on the common goal and common good for the thing. So, thank you and wish you both bright future, more than... So, one ask would be to continue to be in public service. After all this experience, that's important. Our nation needs you both. You have to continue. And that's the only thing I would say, and good luck, and may God bless you both.
So, same, I just wanted to congratulate you again on all your achievements and getting to this point and the growth. And I think it's so interesting watching the kids come in, because it's... Time goes so fast. And it's interesting, the different opportunities that we have fall in front of us throughout our whole lives. And so, sometimes, we don't expect them, but continuing to take them and grow and learn, I think everyone... That's my greatest wish for everyone, is that they never stop giving up their passions and growing and learning, and being willing to come to the table and have the conversations, the best thing. So, thanks, take care, and we'll see your future.
I just wanna thank you both for joining the board. You guys were both just so welcoming and supportive, and you guys took time out of your day before and after board meetings to talk to me and get to know some of my thoughts and what I'm doing in my personal life, and just everything, and just talking, and I really appreciate it. And you both contributed to making me feel very welcome on this board, and that's something that I'm very thankful for.
All right, so we're gonna start back in 2021. It was a long time ago. We had the opportunity to campaign and be sworn in together, and I'm really sad to know that you both are moving on and grateful, of course, for the time that we have shared and the time that you've committed to our schools, right? There's that piece of it, and I know both of you care very, very deeply. Maria, it's been a joy to serve with you. I think you've brought levity to the board as well. I think you bring that commitment to the work that we are here to do, right? For kiddos and educators. And you bring the analytical brain that you carry so well. And then, all of your experiences with, you know, transit and all of those other things that were outside of my realm of expertise, I think outside of the realm of several of our expertise, but were able to bridge us to other local governments, and it was really, really helpful over the last four years. And so, thank you for that, and excited to see where your heart and mind take you next. And then, Ashley, thank you so much as well. You've led us sent with similarly that courage, right? To ask tough questions, important questions, and a strong commitment to, again, our kiddos, and I know our educators for certain. I've learned a lot. I've learned a lot from both of you, and that is a bit of a loss for me, right? With your transition, but I will respect it. And I just hope that you know that your time and energy and time, hours away from family have made a significant difference. And I look forward to, again, just seeing you contribute to community in other ways that call your heart as well, so gracias.
Maria and Ashley, I could not be more honored to serve with two people than serving with you. You were so welcoming. You always made sure I understood what I needed to understand. You were willing to spend additional time with me, whatever I needed. Just so thankful for both of you. And each one of you are passionate about certain issues. And what I like about that is you're passionate about issues that are about our students. You didn't come in with your personal agendas. You made sure that everything you laid out and you suggested, that you proposed, was about our students. Maria, watching you at the Pacun Gala was just awesome. The way you just took over, and, I mean, it really was a beautiful event. And, I mean, it really was a beautiful event, very organized. You did a great, great, great job. And Ashley, the way you have gotten yourself to that next level with your new job just lets us know a set of skills that you have that are just valuable. And we know that the decisions you make on that job, you'll also put students and staff and community first. So I wish both of you the best in those next steps of stepping into your future. I know that you will do dynamic things. Don't forget about us. You can come to board meetings sometimes if you'd like or sign in online. We'd love to know that you're still there with us.
Public comments?
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Chair, if I may. Can I show this photo to everybody? This is your birthday.
Oh my gosh.
You have to send it to him.
I did? This is your birthday. All right. That's enough.
Bob?
Who is going to provide the SCATS updates moving forward? In Maria's absence?
She has already scheduled time with me to scaffold that transition carefully, so she's working hard to cover that base.
We also need to identify to ask us hard questions about the budget, please, in Ashley's absence so that we continue that practice moving forward. So I've enjoyed getting to know both of you. Thank you for your service to the school district and to the public community. Going to miss you guys.
All good?
Thank you. Thank you for the heart that you both bring into this space and not only for what you do here for all of our students, but what you do outside of this space with your other rest of the free time to visit schools, to connect with teachers, to go into classrooms, to go into events. We have appreciated and valued your leadership, and you will be missed. But we hope we can stay connected because I know you care deeply about the community, and I know we can still do great work together.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I mean, I just want to say thank you to everyone for all your heartfelt comments. I really appreciate it. And I mean, you absolutely will not be rid of us because, yes, I mean, I'm so proud of Ashley being the Executive Director of the Center for Hope and Safety. There's definitely going to be a lot of collaboration there, and it's also been a pleasure and a joy to serve with you as well. And getting to grow together and spend all this time together, we'll definitely miss our little campaign friends. Shout out to Osvaldo if he's watching. And yeah, I mean, I can still come back in as the Board President of Chariots and just advocate strongly for the continued partnership and relationship with the school district and the transit service to make sure that we're getting our kids where they need to go. So, yeah, y'all aren't getting rid of us.
Well said. Yes, thank you, everyone. This was really, really nice. I want to say a few words about Maria because it's been an incredible experience to serve on this board, but, you know, working with Maria, I've learned so much from her for the four years, really being able to just dive right into the heart of every issue, no nonsense, but with a ton of heart and compassion. And what I'm most excited about with all of the fellow board members is the relationships. I think they will be lifelong and that it's a real privilege to get to serve with people who do this crazy thing called being on a school board and spend time on, you know, really, really caring deeply about community. And all of these people up here do that every day, which is really amazing, and I've learned from every one of you. And we've accomplished a ton. Most of it, the community doesn't even, you know, doesn't even, isn't a blip on the radar, but we've worked well together and there's lots to still be done in our community, obviously. And I think we'll continue to play a role in one way or the another to help children and educators in our community. So, thank you. It's been a real privilege.
Thank you. Okay, and so if you'll let us, we'll take the bookend of that photo, but we'll take it over here, like one final closeout photo of the full board and student advisor. Oh, we might have to do it with a cellphone.
This is day one.
It's like your kindergarten chalk.
I need it.
Day one, first.
Before, after.
Oh, yes.
We have to figure out the height thing.
Wow. That was great. Now we will move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. My superintendent's report is actually just going to be a little bit of continued celebration. We're going to scroll through some photos that celebrate our graduating class because it is the time of year to continue doing so. And as we scroll through those, I just have a couple of very short things that I want to tell you and read to you. So first, it was an amazing graduation season, top to bottom. We had so many joyful celebrations, and you'll see some of the photos from that as we go along. One of the stories that I want to share with you is actually a very everyday thing, but it really like touched me. So I was at McNary's graduation, and we were in the pavilion. And as a student crossed the stage, it was kind of a little bit quiet in the pavilion. And you heard from up in the corner, one person, I believe it was a father, yell, "That's my kid!" And the reason I loved it is because it was so proud. It was so proud, like that father needed to tell the entire pavilion who his kid was. And I think it carries the spirit of the way that our teams and our staff approach graduation too, which is every single student. They feel that way about every single student. And if you have the privilege of being on stage, you see it because you see the relationship even just in the moment when they pass by. The extra hugs, the little jokes, all of the things that make a relationship between educators and students so rich. And then you can see even in the photos, just the incredible attention to detail, like everything was thought through. Every part of the ceremony, every part of the celebrations was thought through to really match and serve the students who were being celebrated. And I just think it's part of what makes this such an incredible moment in a young person's life and an important moment in a school year. I will close by telling of another brief story. No, not the budget hearing yet. This is not high school graduation, but this is Forest Ridge 5th grade promotion. And so I'm just going to share a few things. These are from our 5th graders. "My favorite memory is my birthday, and the thing I want to do next is get better at art. My favorite memory is meeting my friends, and in the future, I plan to travel around the world. My favorite memory is the 2020 Glow in the Dark party, and I want to have more than 15 chickens because I love them and they mean a lot to me. My favorite memory was our first day of choir, and in the future, I want to see what middle school has in store for me. And then finally, my favorite memory is running because it made me a school-wide celebrity because I ran over 200 miles." So no matter what age you are, the changeover between elementary and middle or high school and the next step into adulthood is full of things that you treasure and the anticipation of what's coming next. And I do think that's part of what makes this such a magical season. And that completes my superintendent's comments.
Beautiful. Thank you. Next, I'd like to introduce Stephanie Wutzel, the Director of Early Childhood Education, to provide our pre-K report presentation.
Oh, don't push it, is that right? Okay. Good evening, Chair Richardson, Board Directors, Superintendent Castaneda, and our Student Advisor. I'm so proud to be here tonight to tell you a little bit about our pre-K program and the important work that's happening. I want to introduce our team that's here. Laura Cresswell, our Assistant Principal for Early Learning, is here, as well as Jessica Burr, our Policy Council Chair, and Laura Brown, one of our Head Start teachers at Battle Creek Elementary. I want to first start just tell you a little bit about some of our, the different programs under our early childhood umbrella. So our first slide just talks about, we have a couple of different programs depending on funding source and the programs there. So we have a Head Start program, serving 390 students in 17 classrooms. We have a preschool promise program, which serves 165 students. We have our Title Pre-K Program, serving 110 students. Our Teen Parent Early Childhood Center, as well as our migrant pre-K program. So we're very excited about that. A little bit about our program demographics. Approximately 71% of our students identify as Hispanic, making up our largest demographic group. We have a culturally inclusive population. The data of our program reflects a racially and ethnically diverse student body which mirrors our city and our community. 401 students, approximately 58%, speak English as their primary language at home. In addition to English and Spanish, we have 15 other home languages in our pre-K program, including Swahili, Tagalog, Arabic, American Sign Language, and more. Our classroom staff support a wide range of linguistic backgrounds in our classrooms, recognizing and valuing the child's home language, helping them feeling respected and included, and fostering a stronger sense of belonging. We're really excited about our dual-language pre-K programs. We first started as a pilot and have now, we have four dual-language pre-K programs, one at Scott, one at Bush, one at our East Salem Community Center, as well as our migrant pre-K program. We will be adding an additional dual-language pre-K program, 425-26, over at Washington Elementary, which will be a new location for us. Thinking about our pre-K program, we do a lot of social-emotional support in our classroom and throughout our program through our, we have a full-time mental health therapist. We've also piloted this year a school readiness classroom that was designed and modeled after our therapeutic classrooms at both Richmond and Weddell. We have increased our FTE for behavior and mental health and added a behavior trainer and done multiple trainings with our staff on behavior, sensory supports, and impacts of trauma. You've heard a little bit before us talk about our PCIT, or Parent-Child Interaction Therapy, and we also do the TCIT as well. We are able to provide wraparound services and support. Those are provided by all of our pre-K staff. We've held different resource distribution events connected with our community partners, doing health and developmental screenings, including dental vision and developmental screenings, family trainings, parenting classes, Ready for K, our KPI grants, and more. Some of the questions is how does the pre-K work align with our board goals and district goals around third grade reading, attendance, sense of belonging? And I think that just really aligns perfectly to the work that we do. So when you think about that early literacy, we weave that, our staff weave that into everything, everyday experiences in the classroom, reading, writing, and listening. Some of the ways they do that would be through name writing, interactive read-alouds, exposure to print, journals, dictation, literacy in play. We also partner with our community to support early literacy and connecting to our Dolly Partner and Imagination Library, our Marion Polk Early Learning Hub, and our literacy grants. We have, I think, four or five that we have now received. With attendance, we do a lot of work around establishing consistent attendance for families and those good habits early and starting that early with families. One, our kids love coming to school, so that's motivating for parents and children because they really want to be there and are excited to come every day. We build in consistent routines into the schedule. Our pre-K staff work closely with families to emphasize importance of attendance and the impact on long-term academic success. And then when we see issues coming up for attendance, we work closely with families to try to problem solve what is kind of getting in the way. Sometimes it's been health concerns, then our nurse will follow up and work with that. We don't want asthma to be keeping you out of school. How can we help work on that? We'll problem solve transportation, childcare, any barriers that are getting in the way for attendance. And then for that sense of belonging, that's what we do every day and are really good at that. We have welcoming and inclusive classrooms, work on relationship building through connections, celebrating individuality, each and every student are.
It is now time for the public comment portion of the school board meeting. As a reminder, all audience members are subject to immediate removal if you engage in abusive, threatening, vulgar, or hate speech, including speech articulated on signs and clothing, which violate the district's harassment and/or "every student belongs" policy. Please note that we provide an opportunity for public comment by virtual call-in, in person or in writing. Electronic mechanisms are used for translation. Each participant has three minutes. We have a countdown timer on screen for monitoring time. The timer counts down from three minutes at 30 seconds. It turns from green to yellow at one second, and it turns red and plays a short bell to signal time is up. Please be mindful of your pace for our interpreters. If the board receives written comment ahead of the meeting, the written comment will be posted on the district website. Tonight, one person has signed up to provide comment. At this time, will Jane Titchinall please come forward?
Hi, hello. I just wanted to come to one of the last meetings and, first of all, congratulate you on this budget. You guys worked so hard, and you did a phenomenal job, especially during a time when we know in Oregon, so many districts are having to cut. They're having to remove teachers. It's devastating. And because of your hard work and your staff's hard work, we have got to add funds, we've got to add programs. I'm grateful to be in a school district that is just mindful and is careful. So, congratulations. And also, to Ashley and Maria, you guys rock. I have loved watching you guys on the school board and just learning from you. You both are so wise and so connected in the community. I really admire both of you. I'm super bummed that you both are going to be leaving. You guys are strong voices, but I know you guys are going to do great, like wherever you go. And just one more thing, you know, to the board and to the community, right now is very important that we stand up for public education in all ways. We are seeing terrifying acts happening right now. And I'm grateful to be in a district that stands on our values and stands for the protection for all of our families and our students, no matter what. So, congratulations, good luck. Thank you for a great year, and I look forward to the next. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. The 25-26 budget hearing is now open. Superintendent Castaneda, would you please provide a summary of the 25-26 budget?
I'll provide the briefest summary to say that this is the next step in the budget approval process. This is the exact document that we spent time with as a full-budget committee. There are no changes in the intervening period. And while this does give us the opportunity to make important investments in our schools, and it does indeed make us one of the very few districts that are able to expand staffing and services in this moment, it also sets the stage for a future where we're going to need to be really, really careful about all of our investment decisions and make sure that we are keeping an eye on our immediate success and our mid- and long-term financial sustainability. As we have had extensive discussions about the budget, I will provide no more update than those that have been given during the budget committee. The steps that come now are required by statute. They're quite technical, and we'd be happy to answer questions as we move through them.
It is now time for the public comment portion of the 25-26 budget hearing. There were no submissions for public comment. Therefore, the 25-26 budget hearing is now closed. The first item in our action items section of the agenda is a vote to adopt and appropriate the 25-26 budget. I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Castaneda for a quick explanation of the resolution.
So, this resolution happens every year in every school district in Oregon, I believe it is true to say. This is the resolution that you, as the governing body, take that adopts and approves the imposition of taxes that help fund our public schools. These do not increase our taxes, this is not a levy. It's just the annual procedure that allows us to move forward with the local revenue that we already collect as a community, like virtually every other Oregon community.
Do I have a motion to adopt and appropriate the 25-26 budget and impose and categorize taxes for 25-26 as presented?
Chair, I will make that motion.
Director Maria?
One second.
You go ahead. You go ahead.
I'll defer to Ashley.
I'll second the motion, Chair.
Director Ashley will second the motion. At this time, I'll open the floor for discussion. Yes, two minutes, please.
Thank you, Chair. I, I, this was an interesting but tough times, and we had a good budget meeting and budget committee. But as we get ready to vote on this one point, close to $1.15 billion budget, I just want to once again thank each and every taxpayer for their generosity. It's really important because, when I just doing a simple math, it comes to close to $30,963 per student. And that's a lot of money for a lot of people. And that doesn't mean we have all that money to spend the way we want it or the way it should be spent, because they all get locked up in different places. But it is the hard-working parents and taxpayers and, you know, whether you pay federal tax, state tax, local tax, doesn't matter. It's your generosity that is making it happen. And that means there is enormous responsibility on our school board and making sure that we are honest, transparent, and accountable for each and every dollar that we spend. It should add value to our students and our community back. And I really appreciate the tough discussion we had on the importance of third-grade reading and what's... To me, it's a very important milestone. You know, reading is absolutely, it's a matter of huge importance. It changes the trajectory and social justice. And so, I really like the board goals as a framework for us to think. I also want to appreciate the young students who shared in their public comment the importance of transportation and free bus passes. I really want them to know that, this is the first time I'm seeing some of them, that I see you, I hear you, I know it is really important. And you did a good job of coming and participating in that process of free speech and right to petition, so I really want you to know that. I appreciate that. Even though, you know, I may see certain things differently, that any dissenting perspective is not bad. That is how the democratic process works, that that's how we do it in America, is to hold this open discussion, debate, etc. So, just, you know, that's one feedback I had, thinking about and reflecting about that meeting. And I hope we continue to do so. We continue to have dissenting ideas and dissenting perspectives, and let's kind of debate through that and do it openly so that we really uphold what the democratic process of good policymaking. And sometimes, in the process, we discuss things that may, in the surface, sound like we are not interested or we may have a different view. But that's how some good policies come out. And thank you, Chair Maria Hinosa, for allowing that process, that kind of discussion, to continue in our budget committee meeting. So, with that, I want to say I'll be supporting this budget. It's tough, and we'll have to think of some austerity measure as we move on because it's going to be difficult in the years to come. But we'll still have our children to be educated, and the schools and teachers have to be there. So, we'll have to continue to provide that informed oversight role. That would mean we will have to be involved and engaged, and I invite our community to also be participating and be engaged. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of adoption and appropriation of the 25-26 budget and imposing and categorization of taxes for the 25-26, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Looks unanimous, thank you. The first item in our action items section of the agenda is a vote to adopt and appropriate the 25-26 budget. I'd like to turn... I'm sorry.
That's what we're fixing right now.
She was fixing it for me.
I'm actually going to, actually, since this was my error, I'm just going to step in and help a little bit here. So, apologies, Chair, for an error in our script. The second item is related to a budget, the authorization of a budgetary transfer of appropriations for '24-'25. And if you'll let me, I'll turn it over to myself to explain that.
Help yourself.
And then, this is the corrected motion. Okay. This is also a routine action. It doesn't happen every year, but it happens very, very frequently, and I would say in most years in most districts. This is a resolution for a transfer of our, of funding within our current fiscal year. And in this case, what it does is it reflects two meaningful changes. The first is, you'll see, board members, you'll see that there's a, the approval of a transfer that reflects some, an increase in instructional expenses. This is actually largely because we've been rebalancing our funding, our personnel funding across funds to create a healthier proportion. So, this is not a net increase of spending. It's just a rebalancing of personnel costs. And then, the second, more substantial item is a $15.5 million transfer. And this enables the district to consider some real estate opportunities that will improve our overall portfolio, improve the safety of our school system, and improve the access we provide to students to great facilities. With that, I will turn it back to the chair.
Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing budgetary transfer of appropriations from fiscal year '24-'25 as presented?
Yes.
Dr. Sangregary, need a second? Seconded by Director Ortiz. At this time, I'll open the floor for a discussion.
So, Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
So, once we kind of use this appropriation and kind of move funds, do we have to pay it back to that original fund as part of our policy? Or how does it work, if that can be explained?
No, there is no requirement to do that. What you're doing is changing the appropriation caps in the current fiscal year to allow us to accomplish these important real estate and fund balancing goals.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of adopting and appropriating the appropriation of the 25-26 budget and imposing the categorizations of taxes? Wrong one.
This is my fault, not the Chair's. I apologize.
It wasn't in Spanish, so I couldn't read it. Do I have a, wait, let me go back. All of those in favor of the motion to adopt the resolution authorizing budgetary transfers of appropriations for the fiscal year '24-'25? Say aye.
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 Aye. It was unanimous, thank you. The item on the agenda is the recommendation for implementation of the secondary Spanish curricular item presented at the April board meeting as a first read. I will now turn the floor over to Director Eric Jesperson for a brief overview of these items.
Good evening, Chair Richardson, members of the board, Superintendent Castaneda, and our student advisor. I'm here today to present, as a first reading, the final committee's recommendation for adopting the curriculum for AP Spanish Literature and Spanish 1 through 4. Since the board has been reviewing curriculum materials in your April, May, and now June board meeting, I wanted to briefly recap how we got to this point. At the April 8th board meeting, Deputy Director Nevz provided an overview of the multi-month curriculum adoption process. This included the formation of a steering committee, the selection and piloting of instructional materials, the evaluation process, and the criteria for recommending materials for adoption. That first reading included proposed curriculum for elementary and middle school science, high school social science, and several world language courses, such as Japanese, German, and AP Spanish language. At the May 13th board meeting, I returned to present a second reading of the requested board action, and requested board action to approve the curriculum recommendations and you approved. Thank you. At this time, I also noted that I would return with a separate recommendation for Spanish 1 through 4 and AP Spanish Literature and Culture. The teachers of Spanish 1 through 4 and AP Spanish Literature participated in the same comprehensive adoption process as the other courses, but needed additional time in May for further discussion about the final two adoption choices, the two curriculum choices that they piloted. Following these meetings, we distributed a Google Form survey to all teachers of these courses. Based on the responses, 83% of Spanish 1 through 4 teachers and 100% of Spanish AP Literature Based on the responses, 83% of Spanish 1 through 4 teachers and 100% of Spanish AP Literature teachers, Spanish Literature teachers, supported moving forward with the selected curriculum. The final committee then met and unanimously recommended these materials based on their alignment to the standards, the incorporation of evidence-based instructional practices, and the availability of strong digital resources. The publishers piloted included Carnegie Learning, Wayside Publishing, and One Way Publishing. The final recommendations were for Spanish 1 through 4, Entreculturis from Wayside Publishing, and for AP Spanish Literature and Culture, and Tortura from One Way Education. Tonight's presentation serves as the first reading. We'll return for future Board Meetings to answer any questions and request a formal approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, can I ask a question?
Oh, questions? You know, I was answering questions. My apologies. Yes. Any questions tonight?
You know, we are, this is the first reading for the Spanish and AP Spanish Literature. When we do this in a general sense, is there a, you know, do we get information from other school districts in the nation that have adopted, or other countries where they have adopted this curriculum or this publisher? As a way to understand, is there a better material, or is it a material?
Yeah. I don't know if I can answer the question specific to the two curriculum that I talked about tonight. I can't answer that question about some other curriculum that we're considering right now. We're a ways away from bringing the elementary literacy adoption to this Board. But that's a, that is again, a multi-month process, and we actually have consulted with TNTP, which is a consultant, National Consultant for Education, and we have actually looked at multiple education systems across the country to kind of compare and help us whittle it down to the two choices.
Do we also look for international, you know, what, another countries where they speak Spanish? In this case, it's Spanish, but in general, do we also get, because some of our IB programs are international programs.
Yeah.
So, do we find, do any research on saying how other countries have adopted? Because some other country for lower investment, they have a much higher, you know, academic rating and...
Yeah. Interestingly, IB doesn't actually have a lot of choices to choose from. That IB program is typically just one or two publishers. But again, I think, to answer your question, I think it just sort of depends on what curriculum we're looking at in terms of what we're looking at internationally. But I'll say, generally, since I've been in this role, typically, we're looking at different American systems for curriculum. Again, using it, the elementary literacy adoption is probably the prime example.
So, if they use this, is there any record saying how they will fare internationally? If there is a, you know, what are that thing they do all over the country, and they compare country to country? How they fare? There's, oh, I forget. What is it?
PISA.
The PISA.
So, do they have any data on these two curriculum that we are trying to adopt? If students go through this, how do they rate internationally with other countries who are Spanish?
Well, you stumped me. I don't know that specific answer, but I'm sure there's data out there.
Okay. Because when you're talking about world language and world literature, we are really trying to, we have to, we have to compete with other countries and make sure we meet the standard of international standard. And if there are other countries who are getting a better outcome for lower, for student investment, then we may, there is something to learn, I suppose, when we have some way to compare countries.
Yeah. That's a really good point. Yeah.
Chair, if you don't mind, just really briefly, before any other questions, two things I wanted to note. One, while we do not have that international data right now, we do have the success of our students who are receiving the seal of bilingualcy, and we have about 380 students this year who were recently celebrated. So, we know that our world language programs, in addition to our dual language programs, are making a great difference in the lives of our students. The second piece I wanted to clarify is that this is actually the second read on Spanish. We did come to you initially and let you know the resources that the Spanish teachers were looking at. And so, today, we're asking for your approval of the resources that they selected, remembering that the Spanish teachers needed a little bit more time, which is why we're coming back to you in June. Thank you.
Second. Second.
We'll be asking for your vote to support the adoption tonight.
Do I have a motion for approval and implementation of the secondary Spanish curriculum as presented?
I do.
Aye. Wait, wait.
Motion.
Oh, do I have? Oh. Dr. Sandegary made the motion. Anybody? I need a second. Second by Director Lisa Harnish. All those in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
The final item in our action items portion of the agenda is the appointment of up to two student advisors to the school board for the 2526 year. The Board opened the application process April 7th through May 19th and received a total of two applications. Welcome to our Jackson, Jackson Woods and Jolie McMahon. The Board reviewed all applications and video interview submissions and will vote now. Since our policies state that the Board can vote for up to two student advisors to the school board, I would like to ask if there is a motion to approve both student advisors that applied?
Yes, Chair.
Dr. Sandegary, need a second?
Second.
Thank you. Director Hudson, seconded. At this time, I'll open the floor for discussion.
I want to ask.
You've already had your... Go ahead. Two minutes.
Chair, I would like to ask, since we have time, if each of the student advisor candidates can just come and say a few words so that the community can also hear from them their vision, their message.
I hope they feel comfortable doing that. They sent us their videos. They sent us, they sent us their videos. Jackson, Jackson, do you feel comfortable coming forward to share?
Chair, would, I'd feel comfortable with us maybe providing comments and then inviting folks? I understand it's kind of hard to put youth on the spotlight when we haven't requested ahead of time.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. But I'd like to just say thank you to both, right, for submitting applications. It is a hu, it is a big responsibility. It's a big time commitment, and you get to sit alongside sometimes very boring conversations. It's, it can feel like, or very big, but I will say, to me, it's really exciting to have youth voices as part of the dais. It really does inform our perspective, and having Sophia and Kayden this year, you know, sharing from their perspective around what is it like from the student experience. And so, that's really, really helpful. So, I do want to say thank you for submitting your applications, and I can see how, one, you have committed your time to improving your own school right and community, and how that commitment is greater, and your willingness to do so at a larger scale, and increasing your commitment in terms of time and energy. So, thank you for that.
Superintendent Castaneda?
I'll say a couple of things. First of all, I just want to say thank you so much for your applications. I really enjoyed your videos. I'm excited about learning right alongside with you all. I think this is something that I love, that we do as a Board, is having student advisors, because like my colleague said, it really does make a difference. And I would just encourage you, as, as we're working together this next year, to please speak up. Tell us a little bit, tell us your perspectives on issues and what that really looks like in, in real life. It makes a big difference. So, I'm excited to work with you both. Thanks for being here.
Superintendent Castaneda?
A little out of order, so thank you. I just want to share, I've had a chance to spend time with both of these students who have been very active members of the superintendent's cabinet, and I'm just so grateful and eager. You will soon learn what Danielle and I already know, which is that they are both thoughtful, smart, funny, energetic, and come with very distinct and meaningful positions about what should be true in their school, but also like, what should be true for all schools. And I'm just really looking forward to the work we will do together with your help. And also, you've passed your first performance task of sitting through a very long meeting, so congratulations on that.
I also want to thank both of you for your applications. I thoroughly enjoyed your interviews. I feel like I know a lot about you. I could tell with your energy and your wisdom that you will be a great, a great part of our Board and the decisions that we are making. I think it's, I'll just take the ownership. I was one of the first ones that started the student advisors to the Board, because I know the importance of student voice in all of the decisions that we make. School is about you, and so, we need to hear from you. So, I want to thank you for applying. Any other discussion or questions?
I'll just add, I'm sad that I won't be on the Board anymore when you two are serving. Student advisors have been so grounding for us as a Board, and I just encourage you to use that voice to kind of bring all the grownups back down to earth on the issues that matter to students in our schools every day. It's been absolutely the most, one of the most valuable things on this school board. So, I wish you both the best of luck.
Any other?
Yes.
I want to say welcome, and thank you for applying and showing interest. I'm excited too, to see what you have to say. So, we've been fortunate to have, you know, a lot of good conversations in the past, so I can see that, that we can look forward to many more. So, and if you wanted to speak, I did want you to understand that you are welcome. But thanks for being here, and that's true. First long meeting. See you soon.
Would either one of you like to have a few words? You both said no? Come, come forward.
Good. Thank you.
Make him happy.
Hi, I'm Jolie McMahon. I go to South Salem High School, and I'm, I've been on the superintendent advisory committee, and it's been really good. And I really like getting to hear, like, all the different perspectives from all the other high school students and help give feedback, and it, it's really cool to like, be able to like, to be able to share opinions and help really make a difference in the Salem Kaiser community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
All those in favor of appointing Jackson, Jackson Woods and Jolie McMahon as a student advisor to the Board for the 2526 school year, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Other, we want to thank you, and congratulations to our new student advisors.
Would you like to take a picture now, or we can wait till they're swearing? How about the swearing in? Yes. I also want to welcome you to stay, but also make sure you feel comfortable exiting if you want to go home and have dinner, for example, so.
I got a B, but I don't see that here. Got it. So, I don't have to worry about it. That brings us to our consent calendar. Superintendent Castaneda, do you wish to provide review of any item on the consent calendar?
I do not. Thank you.
I'm trying to get that. Where is it? Is, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Chair, I want to pull the item.
Okay. Which item?
The, the LGBTQ.
Item C. Item C. We'll, we'll discuss it after we go to the next.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda less, the LGBTQ plus, that we can pull off the agenda. Item C.
Director Harnish made a motion to pull item C and approve the consent agenda. We need a second.
One second.
Director Cottingham has seconded the motion. We will proceed to the pulled item.
Or we'll vote.
No, we'll vote for the first.
I'm sorry. I'm not reading fast enough. Is there a mo, at this time, we'll take a vote for the consent calendar with the exception of C. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Now, we go back to the pulled item. I need clarification, please, on item C. B. C, I'm sorry. Item C.
I, I just wanted to pull this item on the, what the LGBTQ plus Pride Month proclamation. I just want to emphasize that I will be supporting this proclamation, but I wanted to dedicate this to one of my mentor teacher and father figure, Dr. John Frye. And he's the one who brought us to Temple University in Philadelphia in 1996 and helped us, you know, first we stayed in his place and then helped us find a place. He was a trailblazer in the gay rights movement, known for his famous speech in 1972 that led to the removal of homosexuality from the DSM diagnosis. And it was me, my wife, and my little daughter, we lived, stayed in his home until we moved and found a place. He saw in us what we couldn't imagine then. And so, to me, when I support this proclamation, to me, it's like, it literally celebrates the sacredness of life. It takes incredible courage to come out and trend to the family, friends, school, work, society at large. And Dr. Frye went through his share. He lost his faculty appointment in University of Pennsylvania. And many face multiple challenges associated with being sexual and gender-minoritized person, even today. And this is wrong. I want our LGBTQ youth to know that this nation belongs to you, and you belong to our nation, and Salem Kaiser Public School belong to you, and you belong to our schools. You are our children, siblings, friends, family, teachers, and I miss him, but we know his spirit will guide us in embracing the true inclusivity and belonging, and he was a very special man. So, that's the reason I wanted to pull this item, just to kind of recognize him. So, I will be supporting this, and I urge everybody to consider supporting this. Thank you. Thank you, Chair, for letting me pull this item.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
I would also like to speak on this.
I would also like to speak on this item. I think just in honor of Pride Month and all the joy and celebration that it does bring to our community. I also wanted to highlight that currently in the United States state legislature, there is over 588 anti-LGBTQIA bills. And as a member of the LGBTQIA community, I just want to say to people that you are seen, you are important, you matter, and you can make it to great places. And I know that it feels really hard right now, but we can do it together. And I really hope that our director, Trandir Giri, will also follow in his mentor's footsteps with continuing to be a staunch advocate for our LGBTQIA community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes.
Thank you. So I will go ahead and speak on the percentage of votes that, I'll just go back and say, actually referencing someone else very close in my life and, and multiples to me and in my family that do fall under identification of these categories. However, they fought through their lives to have equal, equal rights and attention to all. And I understand what we're talking about, a piece of this, and what they've overcome, and so many other categories of humans have as well. And so I am hoping that we can get to a point where we can put the emphasis on all of our kiddos because so many have come to me, so many in this district, who feel that certain groups are then elevated above the rest. And so since we're identifying with the hurt and the feeling of lesser worth that our sacred students honestly are feeling and wanting to help all of them, I'm going to go ahead and be a voice for that. It has nothing to do with being against any one individual group. I genuinely have a heart and love in place for all students, and so that's it. I, they've asked me over and over to help speak for them, and here I am. So thank you for the majority that have spoken on the minority's behalf as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion? At this time, I'd like, yes.
Do you want to say something? I was just going to make the motion.
I was going to make a really quick, just wanted to highlight a phrase in the language, and I think just to highlight some of the work that we have talked about as a board and how this directly connects to our, our goals as a board and reflection on the data that we've received when it comes to sense of belonging, for example, and attendance rates, and how we still see significant gaps in our LGBTQIA2S+ student population. And the phrase that reads, whereas those obstacles LGBTQIA2S+ youth face include but are not limited to higher rates of bullying, violence, and harassment, higher rates of attempting suicide, increased likelihood to be unhoused, experiencing discriminatory policies, and less access to safe spaces. And just to reiterate, right, that we care about all of our students, absolutely every single one, and highlighting and elevating the, the virtues and the joy and the assets that this particular group of students brings, and also recognizing that they have very unique challenges that we as a board are responsible as well to respond to. So I take that as, as a commitment, my commitment, but I, but I'd say that, that as our responsibility as a board as well. So for that reason, I'll be gladly supporting this.
I'd like a motion for our pulled item under the consent calendar, item C.
I will move that.
I had already.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the LGBTQSI-A+ Pride Month 2025 proclamation.
I'll second.
It was second, it was, the motion was made by Director Cottingham, and it was seconded by Director Maria. All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
One opposed. So the motion did, was approved. Thank you. At this time, we'll have the information standard reports. As a reminder, everything in the information standard report section is provided for the board's review ahead of the meeting. Superintendent, do you have anything to add?
I have one small thing to add here. Amongst our standard reports is the 2025 graduation report. This is not the state data. This is a summary of what has happened as we've concluded this, this current school year. And the one item I want to call attention to is that we had 331 graduates earn the seal of bilinguism this year. That means that more than 10% of our graduating class is graduating literate and fluent in more than one language. And it is, there are multiple languages represented in our seal of bilinguism. This makes us the largest earner in Oregon. And I also think that it is worthy to note the degree to which our 31-school dual-language program is feeding this number and growing this tremendous additional competency and asset for our students as they leave our schools and go out into the world. And that is all I wish to add on the standard reports. Thank you.
That takes us to board reports. It's the board report section of the agenda where our directors and student advisors share work from formal committee assignments and activities of the board related to youth programs and school district activities since the last board. So I'm going to let Kayden have the opportunity to go first.
All I really have to comment on as the year is wrapping up is to, you know, congratulate my fellow seniors for graduating and making it through these four years, which has been so incredible. As far as other things go, it's really, I've been watching other programs within my school kind of wrap their year, full of accomplishments. And I, you know, watching these programs, celebrating their accomplishments, particularly like the, the music department at McKay. Each, the band orchestra and choir, they each have their own pops concerts. So those have, I know those have all been really successful and kind of a really, really good way to wrap up their successful years.
And you all won first place at State?
Yes.
Yay! And we're just so proud of you. You have been truly, truly an asset to our board. Let's give him a round of applause. We'll let the two short timers go next.
Well, I will give my final SCATS update. I, I know that it'll, it pains Bob to hear that. But, so we had our SCATS Policy Committee meeting on May 27th. And, I mean, I will get to go to the last one in June, but maybe I'll just email my successors for the report. I think a few things to just highlight. They completed their US DOT certification of SCATS planning. They did very well. There was 12 recommendations for modifications to other SCATS plans when they're updated. And there was three commendations for the Safe Routes to School work, the adoption of the SCATS Metropolitan Transportation Safety Action Plan. That's a mouthful. I just wanted to pause because that was a lot. And the clarity for using funding program names in the tip. So essentially, they were commended for our Safe Routes to School program work, which just shout out to the district for partnering on the Safe Routes to School program and running programs that teach our kids how to ride bikes and the importance of pedestrian safety. And if anybody has seen Beth Schmidt out there in unicorn costumes, chicken costumes, really making sure that kids are seen when they're trying to cross the road. And also, I just want to uplift the SCATS staff for the fact that they work really hard of making sure that all their documents and information is digestible because it is really hard information, especially when we're talking about federal programs. And then, quick shout out to Chariots, who also completed their DOT certification and had no findings the first ever. Just saying. And then there was update on the M-TIP Metropolitan Transportation Improvement Plan project selection. So again, folks, seven-year plan, transportation infrastructure for the Salem area, the city of Kaiser, Marion County, Polk County, the city of Turner, and the city of Almsville. In June, there will be continued discussion on funding options. And in July, there will be a recommended list of projects approved for funding. So if there's anything that's really important for folks in the area, make sure that you're keeping an eye on that. Like I'm saying, that's, that's your sidewalks, your stoplights, your crosswalks, your bike lanes. And then I also wanted to uplift that I got to attend the McKay High School graduation ceremony. And I was there with Danielle, our deputy superintendent, and a director of strategy and analytics, Jonathan. And it was, it was a really fun time. It was really hot. Got to see Kayden graduate, got to see my niece graduate. And I also wanted to uplift that there was 529 graduates in the second-largest high school in Oregon. And I just really want to make sure that we're uplifting that. They had over $11 million in scholarships and over 400 students, graduating students that were participating in our CTE programs. And so I really, like I said, just want to commend McKay for all the work that they're doing. I think it's really important. And like I said earlier, it is Pride Month. I'm here. I'm queer. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, first, I had the honor of attending the Green Carnation graduation ceremony, which celebrates our LGBTQIA2S+ youth across the district. It's a really amazing event. This time, it was held over at the Willamette Heritage Center. My hope is that the district will continue to make improvements in this space for our youth. I really do appreciate the attention that's been given to our LGBTQIA2S+ youth and want to ensure that that sense of belonging data continues to improve because I think, as the proclamation pointed out, some of the youth belonging to these communities have the lowest sense of belonging within our school system. And it's critical that we make sure they feel seen, heard, and supported throughout their educational experience with us and supported across the communities of Salem and Kaiser. And I also got the chance to attend the Native Ed Ceremony, again, the graduation ceremony over at McNary. This is always a beautiful ceremony with drumming and really meaningful stories of our native youth who are thriving in our schools due to the programs offered by our Native education program. Also here, I think great strides have been made, but there is a lot of work left to do to ensure that our native youth have all the tools they need to succeed in Salem-Kaiser Public Schools. Again, here, we see data showing lower graduation rates, lower attendance rates for our tribal youth. And my hope is that the MOU process that was started, I think on my first year on the school board, will wrap up soon. I know the superintendent and her team have been leading a process to finalize memorandum of, memorandums of understanding with the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron and the Confederated Tribes of the Soletz Indians. And those MOUs were originally intended to really focus on what the district can do to work closely with tribal leadership to ensure that the students get what they need from our district and so that they can succeed at higher rates. For the third year in a row, I got to be a guest member of Congress for the Sprague Mock Congressional Hearing. Others probably did that, too. That is so much fun. Each group of kids gets to take on a constitutional law issue and talk about all the case law, talk about current events, apply the case law. These students always blow me away. They have so much poise, professionalism, and knowledge that goes really deep on constitutional law. It's, it's truly impressive. I, I couldn't even imagine doing that when I was in high school. And every year, every class that comes through just is incredible. They also don't even bat an eye when I've thrown them hard curveball questions. They know exactly what case to point to and how to answer the question. And it's just huge kudos to them and their educators for doing that work. I want everyone in our community to be able to witness the excellence that is in our schools. There's still so much negativity out there about Salem-Kaiser. And when you have the moment to go in and see what's actually happening in classrooms, it just overwhelmingly changes your perspective and just shows how dedicated people are in our schools. Lastly, I got to do both the South Salem High graduations. They do back-to-back because there's not enough room for all of the kiddos on the football field. And it, this is truly one of the best things about being on the school board, getting to stand on the stage and hand out diplomas and just see their faces, the parents, the families that are so proud and filled with joy. It's amazing. I wanted to point out that the South, according to Principal Romine, the South Salem graduates have earned over $10 million in scholarships. I just find that to be absolutely mind-boggling and incredible. So kudos to all those graduates. And it was especially fun to be on stage with Sophia, our other student advisor, who's not here tonight. And so we got to see her read the land acknowledgement and receive her diploma and give her a big hug on stage. And that was just incredible.
Thank you. Director Otis?
Thank you. I had to look back at when we last met, and it was on May 13th. So I'm going to try to go in chronological order. But soon after that, we had our local elections, which we knew was a special election, and we had the livability bond. We had the Mecca's bond on there, and of course, our school board elections as well. And I just want to give a shout out to election workers because it's no easy task. And to everyone who participated, it's, you know, it's really important to be involved. And we are local electeds, right? And so just wanted to put that on the, on the radar. These are not going to be in order because I was trying to brainstorm. But we have the Crystal Apple Awards, which I think most of us had an opportunity to join. And I'm sure that folks have seen the pictures, but they're, I don't think it's overdone to, once again, congratulate all of our nominees and honorees of that event. It's always really beautiful to see. I, I think my favorite part is the, the red carpet because you have students, right, you have coworkers, you have other educators, you have administrators showing up to support everyone who's been nominated. And you can just see the relationships. You can see the care and connection that is there. So thank you to the chamber as well for their support in, in this continued celebration and recognition of the amazing educators we have in the district. SKA's retiree event, a couple weeks ago. I know Chair Richardson was there as well. And what I took away is that our retirees are ready to travel. I think every single one. They had these little note cards, and every single one was looking forward to traveling. So if anyone needs a travel buddy, please sign me up. Native Ed Graduation. I'll just echo Director Carson Cottingham's comments. It always fills me with joy and gratitude, the drumming component. There is this spiritual feeling to that celebration. And to see the, the vast representation of native communities that we have across the district, right, from tribes and communities that are in Oregon and like within Oregon boundaries and outside. So thank you for everyone who puts that together. It's really done with a lot of care and intent. I had the opportunity to join the Butterfly Ceremony, which is the kind of graduation recognition for the Teen Parent Program. And to see the handful of young mothers who are graduating, whether they're pregnant, parenting, you know, one or two children, as was the case for a few of them. It, it really is, it really touched me to, to hear their stories and to hear them reflect on what it is that they're taking. and to hear them reflect on what it is that they're taking away from their time in that program specifically. And it does highlight for me and how important those relationships are, right? And so, folks who have the opportunity to be in a program that is a little bit smaller but that caters, that supports their needs and understands that they need childcare. And it's always a reminder of, I guess now it's 13 years ago, I was in that same seat. And people move on, right? A lot of the folks have retired, but that care and compassion continues to live within that program. And the Roberts High School graduation, which is super neat. And just recognizing that similarly, those students have had, many of those students have had really challenging experiences, probably through K-12, right, inside of school and outside, out in the community and at home. And that it's also those relationships with our educators, with our teachers, that push them to show up and that encourage them to not give up and to keep trying. And they spoke to that, right? They speak to, you know, if it wasn't for, you know, this teacher or that teacher, I wouldn't be here. And it is a moment of celebration and of deep gratitude for me for all of the work that everyone in our district does.
Director Harnish?
Well, I have to say, I 100% agree with my colleagues at this. This season is probably the best time, the best season to be a member of the board. And we've covered a lot of ground in the last month since we last met. Certainly, Crystal Apple was a magical evening. I always enjoy that event every single year. The Mock Congress, I was a part of that as well. I almost, I almost forgot about that. I'm so glad that you mentioned that. That was stunning to just hear the passion that every student had, how they walk in, conduct themselves. It was amazing. And I just find myself in awe of our students and in awe of our teachers and just the passion that they are fueling. And then, of course, graduation season. I tried to go to as many things as I could. I have to say, really enjoyed each one of the celebrations, whether it's the avid stole or the Green Carnation with LGBTQ+ students, Black, African-American, the Butterfly Ceremony. Those, I love those intimate events because you really do get to meet students on a, and connect with them in a different way and just see the camaraderie that is there. And also, the care and compassion around building an environment for students where all students feel seen and heard and doing it in a way that is going to be conducive to the experience that they have had in our schools. So I just, I just want to acknowledge the staff and the district for making those possible because those are really important moments for our students. And then, of course, West graduation brings back all kind of memories of when my kids crossed the stage. And then also, the community transition programs, that's one of my favorite graduations. I will be at that one every single year. And then, early high school graduation, and then Roberts. And I'm going to give a special shout out to one of the student speakers at the Roberts graduation, that speech hearing about how essentially, school saved his life. And I'm sure there are other stories similar to that, but I am convinced that we are saving many children's lives. And that is something that I think we all need to be very proud of and keep striving to make sure that every child is seen and heard and feels like they are a success. So, very proud to be here and I am proud for what is next, next year.
Thank you. Director Hudson?
Thank you. Ditto with that. But also to see, to watch the kids kind of take off and see how passionate they are about life in general. It's so infectious and so wonderful to have the privilege to be a part of. I'm glad you brought up the transition program. But all of them, it's true, I'm just going to try to be quick, the saving the life piece. And that, I think, is what our staff deserve and teachers another gratitude for because they're the ones that show up every day with these kiddos and see them and walk them through these life challenges. They're the ones that have that door open to be that adult that they may not otherwise have in their life, that they can kind of just, you know, get a high five from or whatever it is. I can, I can speak personally on all of that. And so, it's pretty neat to be able to see this whole district grow and still have that heart in it. And I hope to continue to see that heart grow. But thank you again, teachers, for not giving up and showing up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. You know, graduation season is just the best part of this role. But I'm going to start with a teacher who invited me to a fourth-grade classroom in Harriet Elementary School in West Salem. And it was just fun because then the kids asked me to speak in Hindi. The teacher could speak Hindi, so we exchanged. And then, there was a student who possibly speaks Pashto or Dari from Afghanistan. So she was able to understand exactly what we are talking, but of course, none of us can speak that. Then everybody wanted to share their own language. Then somebody wanted to say something in Afrikaans and Yuppie's and Marshallies and Spanish, and then it went on and on. So we started with one topic, but everybody wanted to show and tell one language. And that is the beautiful part of this, a school district with 130 languages and different culture. It's like the mini United Nations in my mind. Then Dr. Jeff Krepper invited me to West Salem Fire Science Exhibit. That was like the first time in a high school. That was, oh my God, I wouldn't have had the courage to enter that burning building with 800 degrees or 500 degrees. I don't even know what. But the most beautiful part was one of the students who said, these are my brothers and sisters, referring to the classmates. And there were some who had taken EMT course and also fire. And that is the goal that we are trying to achieve, the sense of belonging or feeling a sense of connectedness that just like in a fire station, they live there, it's almost like a family. And these young students, and I think 15 or 18 of them got their certification to be Fire Crew One or something like that. So they can go firefighting right away. Then, of course, thank you, Lisa and, you know, Chrissy, both of you were there for the Community Transition Program graduation. That is special. That's really special. And I went to Sprague graduation. This was like, you know, brought back memories of my own oldest graduating there. At that time, it was pouring rain. In the one side, I almost had a heat stroke, but this time it was manageable. You know, I really want to say thank you to the teachers' retirement. It is such a beautiful journey. Some of them have worked 40 years, 41 years, and unbelievable stories they had. Yes, they all want to go on to travel, you know, they all want to tour. But the most important thing was sitting and listening to their stories and their journey. And some of them even want to come and work half-time. Can I be a reading specialist? Can I be doing something? I don't need the benefits. You know, that is the level of commitment our teachers bring to this. And it was just a beautiful way to attend that. Then, of course, just like Ashley mentioned, Ms. Pope invited us to the AP US Constitution or the government panel. That is fun time, you know, this, it's really nice. It's very nice. And two of the students from our Sprague got a national award, you know. So I think this is the kind of beautiful part of being in our district. And this is what needs to be highlighted and people have to be talking in this community. And more and more, we talk about it. You know, that's how we can bring some growth mindset to all our young people rather than feeling, you know, I'm kind of a victim or I've been victimized. This country has so much opportunity. Nowhere else in the planet, I can tell you. I've lived in three countries. And it is, the doors are open. It's for us to take a step in. Sometimes the barrier is we ourselves, we hold ourselves back. So I wish all the students who are graduating walk into the open door. There's so much opportunity. This is a beautiful country and you'll do well. Thank you. And thank you for Maria and Ashley for serving the board along with me and Kayden and Sophia. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night and God bless you all.
Thank you. Most of the events I attended, my fellow board members attended also. The SKA retirement was awesome. The Crystal Apple Awards were awesome. I attended the African-American/Black celebration for the graduates. It was awesome. I've also been working with CBO, Be Black Foundation. We had a bowling day for students and families to come out and bowl. We had a movie day for people to come out and go to the movies and share the outcomes of the movie. We also have a library day upcoming day and a swimming day upcoming day. And those are all advertised on social media and we'd love for you to join us there. Also, the Bo Black and Brilliant Summer Program is up and running. And the CBO, Be Black Foundation has purchased books for the students to be able to learn about their history. Looking forward to that. And we're asking everybody on behalf of the NAACP to come out on June 19 on State Street to the Juneteenth Celebration. There'll be a lot of food, a lot of fun, just a lot of collaboration, getting to know everybody. Please, please, please come out. I think the time is noon to six. And that concludes my report for tonight. It's just been a great year with Maria and Ashley and Kayden and Sophia. Going to miss you guys, but you're always welcome to join us. Anytime you get ready. We have public comment. Thank you, thank you very much. Did you want to say anything else? All right. It is currently 8:14. This meeting is adjourned.